Are we ready to start, or should I wait for Steve?
Steve is. Steve is, I'm trying to promote him, it won't let me promote him, so he's on. It's just taking me a couple of tries to get him. Oh, he's rejoining, he should be popping up right now.
There we go.
Now I can, now I can talk.
Can we see you? Okay.
Okay, we got five members.
Logic.
Ready to start?
Yeah.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the January ninth meeting of the zoning board of Tills. I'd like to introduce the five members who will be seated here tonight. On my left is a permanent member, Dennis Crowe. I'm a permanent member, Bill Piggott. Dylan is an alternate, and he will be moved into a permanent position tonight. Another alternate, John Sire, Sire, excuse me, John. He's an alternate, and he will be a permanent member tonight. And Steve Prichkov, who's a permanent member, will be with us via Zoom. Four votes are needed for an application to be approved. In accordance with state statutes, a simple majority is not sufficient. All actions will be taken by roll call. So tonight, we will need four votes to pass, and they, and that's all that's required out of the five. The town planner will read the legal notice as advertised in the source. After the, after the applications have been read, anyone who wishes to withdraw or postpone his or her's application is free to do so. If there is no one who wishes to withdraw or postpone, we will then go forward with the applications in order in which they appear on the agenda. Each, for each application, the applicant or his or her's representative will be promoted to a panelist. They will then state his, his or her name and address for the record the nature and the reason for the appeal. The applicant may screen share all application materials or request assistance from staff. Any and all items, plans, or pictures shown to the board are considered exhibits. And all exhibits must be provided in PDF or paper copy to the town staff. After the presentation is made by the applicant, we will entertain questions from members of the board, and then entertain questions from the audience. Attendees, attendees will raise their hand in the Zoom format and wait to be called upon. After questions, those speaking in favor of the application may raise their hand and be heard. Then those in opposition may raise their hand and be heard. Please be sure to state your name and address before you speak. Following any comments by the board or public, the applicant will have an opportunity for closing comments. The public hearing portion of the application can be closed, and the board can deliberate. Upon closing of the public hearing, no new correspondence or comments can be received by the board. In most instances, we will make our decision immediately after each hearing. You may stay to hear the result or call the land use office in the morning. You will be notified by mail, and all decisions are published. I guess the opening, I've made the opening remarks, and the meeting will, can, the meeting will continue. And I guess, Maria, you want to read the application here?
Yeah, but first, we're going to, the first item was on election of officers, which we need to vote to.
Table till next time. I moved the table, the election of officers until next month.
Yeah, so do we need a motion?
Yep, we made the motion.
Okay, a second. This is to table the election of officers until next week.
Okay.
John, second.
John, second. On favor?
Okay. Moving on to the application.
Do we need to formally seat those two people?
They were already, we seated them when he introduced them, yeah. And we did, yes, we did seat two for an absent member and a vacant position. Do you, is, are you presenting, Chris?
I'm.
Oh, okay, hearing. Application number twenty-three dash twenty-two sixty-nine Soundview Avenue, map seven lot four, R four zone. Owner, Ray Pantalina. Applicant, Russell Campani. Variance requests section two point seventeen to allow forty-two feet to a coastal resource where fifty feet is required. This application includes a coastal resource, a coastal site plan review.
If you could share the coastal site plan, or site plan, I think I can present with that and then pull anything else up. So, good evening, I'm Russell Campani, I'm with CK Architects, one three one Boston Street in Guilford. And I'm representing Ray Merida Pantalina, who had purchased six nine Soundview and are looking to take the existing house down and build a new home, sell it as permanent residence. Chuck Mandell from Stevens Engineering has authored the site plan review. I reviewed it within a day, and I'm able to present that. But I think you want to separate those two and have the variance first, and then the coastal site plan is the second. We're.
Okay. So I don't know how familiar you are with the materials that were presented tonight, but basically, the red outline is the existing building that sits on the property right now. And it sits within a bisecting VE zone line that wraps up and around over in this direction. And so it currently is about thirty-two feet off of the coastal resource, which is an existing concrete seawall that runs along the property on the sound along this edge. In looking at all the various aspects that we're trying to bring into conformity with the way that we redesigned the property, one of the big aspects was moving the septic system up to the front of the property where we had the best soils and the least risk of erosion. So the, the new septic system is proposed in the front here, which has certain setbacks for utilities and other things to get in. So we have pushed the property, I'm sorry, the new proposed building, which is the yellow outline, as close to the front property setback as we can. And we've kind of opened up a little bit to allow our tank and our other set tanks to work to make an L configuration. That's allowed us to move the building about ten feet further back from the existing conditions. That's outside of the VE zone, so we're in an X zone favoring the western and northern part of the property. We've also been able to take a non-conforming side setback of the existing non-conforming house and remove that by, by basically having a conforming setback on the western side of the property. And also on the eastern side of the property, we've, we've removed a patio that's in non-conformity on this side and brought it into conformity with the layout. So in general, I think the property itself has some hardships associated with non-conforming septic, a VE zone that sort of bisects and wraps around the site in kind of an odd way, leaving a very small area of high ground for us to build on. And I think we've done a good job to minimize the existing non-conformities in our new proposal. Plus, the new home will be fully compliant with FEMA, fully compliant with building code. We'll have a compliant septic system. So I think in general, we're in keeping with the plan of conservation development, our proposal. All we're asking for is an eight-foot setback reduction for the coastal site plan. I also will point out that with the seawall, I think, in this particular case, and with a septic move to the front of the property from the existing conditions, as well as the proposed requirements for us to handle all of our roof drainage in the subsurface drainage system on site, all these measures really replace some of the concerns associated with the coastal site line, which is meant to protect the sound from erosion and other things along those lines. So I think the site conditions actually lend itself for some relief from this as well, just because we're greatly benefiting and controlling compared to what's there now. But we're also have this hard seawall that really protects during construction, post-construction from the, from the risks associated with proximity to the sound. So with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the variance.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Did I get it correctly, there are three, three reductions in non-conformities?
Two primary, the, the biggest one is, is that we're reducing and eliminating a non-conforming side setback. The patio on this side, I, I don't think really counts toward the setback. It is a hard patio that's a little high as a terrace, but I think we're below the line. So I think on this side, we're not reducing a non-conformity on the, on the other side property line. And then we're, we're, we're eight, I'm sorry, we're ten foot six further back from the coastal resource.
Septic doesn't count, that's.
Yes, it, it's not conforming with regard to zoning, it's not conforming with regard to health department.
Okay. Okay, so that, that's a, I would, we, we received this, what, today, this colored, colored version, it was that yesterday? But it's much easier to explain, to read it than the black and white one, so.
Okay.
I was able to take a look at it.
Yeah.
So I will note that there were, we got some feedback from Trent and Sanitarian today, actually, made two minor modifications. They don't really have any impact. We had to make a change to the second floor plan associated with whether a room was considered a bedroom or not. And there was originally a note associated with a geothermal well that wasn't. We, we don't think we're going to go in the direction of geothermal, we sort of had it as a placeholder. He wanted more information, we couldn't provide it until we had a designer onboard for that. So we removed that and resubmitted it to the language for the plan. So they don't really impact the coastal site plan.
If we do decide to go into thermal, if the, if the, if we get proposals that are reasonable, we'll come back for a modification to the site plan review if, if we, if we pursue the geothermal well.
Okay.
That's all. Any questions?
Yeah, can you, yeah, can you do a bit more in depth on what you're claiming the illegal hardship to be for this application?
Well, we don't have to have illegal hardship really, actually, with the reduction of non-conformities that we have in the proposal, because it is an existing non-conforming. But from a vantage point, that, that, but from a vantage point of what I see as, as the not conforming, I'm sorry, the existing hardships associated with the property, the VE zone line that wraps around the property and sort of bisects it really leaves a very small portion of this property that's buildable in, in a way that's, that's reasonable without huge costs and risks and, and lack of resilience. And I, I think that is the primary unique aspect. I think, though, we're also inheriting an existing house that is, an existing non-conforming house that we're breaking, decreasing the existing non-conformity. But.
Okay. About what you are demolishing.
Is that lot and house, was that built in pre-zoning?
It, it's not pre-zoning, I don't think, but it is pre the coastal, critical coastal resource setback.
Okay.
So that aspect of the house and its location was built prior to the apartment of the critical coastal resource, so it was subsequently made non-conforming.
Yeah. John, do you have any?
Just one question. In the application set with the house, the existing house and so forth, move the home out of the theme, the thirteen zone into the X zone. I don't find understand how that works out into the current, the current house and the.
So the, the VE zone line, and it, it is strange. Most mapping goes to an AE zone of still water flooding and then an X zone. This particular area goes directly from a VE zone to an X zone. There is a pretty significant grade change between this portion of the site and, and this portion of the site. But that is a little unique in the FEMA mapping. But there's a line that comes right here on the page and then wraps up here. And on this side, it's higher ground and in the X zone. So that is an unmapped zone under FEMA. And on this side, which crosses the building right here and crosses this area here, is in the VE thirteen zone. So we're, we actually, because we're up on this high ground, will, would even be conforming. We're at fifteen, we're finished four elevations. So it's a, it's just naturally the grade is, is in sort of going diagonally in this direction. And I guess that would read into the hardship as well, associated with the lot. Is, you know, it does have this low-lying area, and then this very small area that's reduced by its setbacks that we're allowed to build. So there is a grade change that's unique. It happens to represent also with the VE zone line that kind of bisects and pushes us to that small area, buildable area on the property here.
Aggressively, if you don't get your variance, how would the, would you be able to construct a similar roundhouse?
Not a, not a similar house, the same scale that we have here. You know, this is about twenty-seven hundred square feet of livable plus a five hundred square foot garage. I think that's a reasonable-sized whole-time house. It's not as though they're trying to overdo it in a way. But it would be very hard to shape and, and provide all factors associated. We did try, we tried to minimize our impact, you know, on where we're locating this. So I think we'd have to reduce the scale to still be able to get the septic, meet all the other setback requirements. Yeah, so we're really, we're, we're, we're sort of shaping it around the septic and the setbacks for the septic in the way that it sits here and the way that the septic is and, and needs, requires a setback in utility entrances. We're meeting setback on this side, and we're right up against setback on this side. So there's something has to give. And I think from our vantage point, the, the coastal setback, given all the other measures we're, we're investing for the property to minimize concerns associated with it, that is the place to give, rather than, I mean, I could come before you and ask to maintain our site property setback. You know, I could be asking for three feet relief from our side setback from the property and probably gain you two feet or four feet in our, you know, I could play games, but this seems like the most sense to, to ask for relief associated with the coastal resource. We're meeting the zoning setback for the rear property line. We're just not meeting the critical coastal resource setback. And from our vantage point, even if you had time to read the letter from the DEP, I was very surprised how positive their feedback was. They even actually spoke to the variance in support of it, the DEP, because we're doing all these other measures to bring the property to greater conformity with the, with the coastal resource concerns, which is what they were receiving the advisory.
Okay. On that ground, driveway's on our left side there.
The driveway is actually currently a loop, and we're maintaining that. So it's, it's got two accesses right here that come through with a, with a green area in the middle. So, so there is, there's sort of a, a parking pull-off in this area, a loop driveway that comes through. And then this portion of the yellow is our garage. So that has fronted access here, and then the front door entrance is, is in this area here.
Okay. And where did you say the septic is?
So this is the, the blue right here is the septic. So there's the tank and then the, the field. It's over top of it, yeah. So it'll be constructed for age twenty voting, so. But that really was the first thing that happened. The testing on the property was, that was the location we had. The soils and the, and the groundwater conditions still allows to have a conforming septic. But we also have, you know, you have to have ten-foot utility use and setbacks. We have a propane tank we have to fit. I mean, there's just a lot that tries to get into these properties. So there's a lot of pieces to juggle. And, you know, as I said, we did try to, you know, to bring it completely within that fifty-foot setback. I will also point out, actually, so I did the design for this property for the former owners, which were the Stepanowskis. They actually live next door. So they were going to build this out as their primary residence. They decided to, to change it, sold it to friends, actually, the Pantalinas. But I actually gained approval two years ago for the site plan. Based on the critical coastal resource being measured to the high-tideline, since the change in planner, there's been a change in how they are measuring the, the critical coastal resource setback. So we were conforming and would have been conforming under that and actually had an approval for, for a coastal resource on the property for a similar design and a similar location. But in the two years, it's been administrative change in their interpretation of, of the, where it should be measured has changed. So that's why we're also. I will say that I think that her interpretation is correct. It is how other towns have been, been, in my experience, have been measuring it. But it kind of put us in a little bit of, of a circumstance because the owner purchased the property and they had an approved coastal site plan. And, but the rules have changed. So not that that really weighs in on you much, but it does give a little bit of context, you know, to, to the, you know, to the situation that it is. It's just whether the stone riprap is considered part of the coastal resource or whether it's part of the seawall, it's kind of the, it's kind of the, that's the main structure, but it hasn't come out yet. So that is the, that's the, that's the eight feet that we're asking for.
Somebody else got any questions on the ground?
The only comment I'll make is in the application, and this is.
Can we go over the application, we bring it up?
Sure.
Bring it up on the display.
Yeah, if you want to.
Yeah. Because I want to go over it.
Okay. Yeah, we can bring it up.
Not that I have an issue, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, sure. The question I have on the application, and this is just in the wording, if you go down to the, Marie, if you go down to page two, and you see where it says under six A, it says, bringing the west property line and the CCR setback into conformity.
Yeah, it should say greater conformity.
So it's, right, it should say it's in greater conformity on the CCR setback. And it's also wrong on the coastal resource. It says on the coastal resource report. It says, bringing the west property line and CCR setback into conformity. So the CCR setback should say setback into more conformity.
Which?
Yeah, so that's.
It's just a flag, it's, it's eighty.
That I got, what was you just?
That's in the.
Coastal site plan application too? Okay.
Yeah, I think you just have.
Dennis, do you have any questions on the application?
I just wanted to go through it quickly, just to.
Here, you want to see it? Okay.
So scroll up. Which, which way? Number D. I'm sorry. Six. Seven. Yeah, okay, so. So the, the, the second line is just a comment there, the structure will be forty two feet. That's, that's not a section or a variance.
So this is recognizing a transition in the way that variance will be granted in Madison before. You used to do it, how much you were giving relief and, and then now it's what the actual setback will just, just. So, so that's, that's why it said both ways.
Yeah, okay. Down below explains these flooding flood zones. And brings C C R towards conformity.
Yes.
Here. Maintaining system, septic system setbacks. And the existing long C C R setback increased existing. C C R, okay.
This is just talking about the area of house that's in the current non-conforming zone. We're reducing by two hundred and sixty nine square feet and then one hundred and thirty nine square feet in the side setback.
All those are in compliance with that. Okay. Set under required into the front. Yeah, the rest of them, I think, wrong. So then you get something. So you get the actual statements of open heights and everything, notification, property owners, stop letter. Things in the attachments.
Yep, that's all been submitted.
Rest is okay. All right, so if we take a look at the, uh, coastal site plan review, whatever, all these things.
Critical coastal, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, coastal site plan.
There you go.
Um, reviewer cam. Do you want to look at the plan or the application?
The application. Scroll this through, through this pretty quickly too. So, um, site plan for zoning deployments. There. Waterfront site, yes. During properties that subject located flood zones entirely the next next two percent. Okay. Area site is thousand, disturbed five hundred acres. Description, intent is to be definitely non-conforming, replace with a conforming home. Yeah, not, not technically fully conforming. Fifty foot setback. Right, so the, just in previous coverage.
Well, with the exception, with the exception of the fifty foot coastal resource.
Yeah, okay, I, I see that. Yeah. Conforming except, yeah. Uh, which, which will require eight foot variance. Just in previous coverage, um, decreasing in previousness. So instruction to new one, I think. Commence upon approvals, okay, good, move on. No provision for runoff on site, it's just painful. They're okay with that. All right. Go ahead. And so it's. Hazard in coastal waters, just by everything else. So. Oops, shoreline, yeah, we got a definition. All right, so they came up. Consistency, forty two feet from the closest portion, so that's eight feet within the, less than the fifty. Right? Okay, so general development. And consistent with K B land water resources to support use. That everything down there was not applicable. And focus factor seven area, yeah. Okay. Remaining adverse impacts. It's good. All right. We have deep response. Should move that just to be first recheck.
So we covered the actual variance, you're ready for him to cover the coastal site plan portion?
Yes.
We have deeps.
Yes. Okay, so if you want to.
So you're mixing the two.
I, I know, I mean.
Would you want to have public comment before?
Well, I don't know if he, did you, why did you want to look at now or do you want to wait until?
Okay, we can wait, okay, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, there are no more questions by the board. I'll open, are there any, uh, public comments for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application?
Do we have anybody on the? Do we have?
Okay.
There's one person. There's one person in attendance, but they're not raising their hand.
Okay.
Oh, they're raising their hand.
Okay.
Well, that's the owner. He's just waiting.
Does he want to speak? Huh?
You might, yeah.
All right, uh, but there are any public comments from?
Wait, wait, we have, we have a hand raised.
Does he want to speak?
Yeah, Mr. Catalino?
Yes.
Did you want to speak?
Okay, sorry.
Did you want to make a comment?
No, I was just acknowledging that I was in attendance.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Any public comments from anybody wishing to speak opposing the application? Anybody, okay? If there are no further, are there any further questions by the board? No, okay. Is there any correspondence received into the record by name and date? Not, uh, we don't necessarily have to read it into the record. Can read relevant excerpts if these are, is there any other correspondence?
There was no letters that I received in favor organs.
If, are there any final comments from the applicant?
Sure. Um, there is a comment on a D E P letter that supports the variance, actually. So I wouldn't mind that being part of the record because I think that's a little unusual. Um, and it does, since it is the critical coastal resource, I think the D E P's comments are, are. Can you, yeah, if you can pull that up, I'll, I'll. It's at the last conclusions. They just speak saying that they feel that the variance is justified, given the improvements that are being proposed. So here, the applicant seeks a variance for the proposed structure being within the coastal setback. This variance request highlights the need to balance construction requirements with environmental considerations, particularly in a coastal area. So I think it's not directly positive, but it is sort of speaking that, um, the commentary up here is, is basically not drawing uh, conclusions that, that, the, the, the relief from the coastal resource is going to threaten sound.
Are there any final comments from the public? I need a motion to close the public portion of the hearing and to deliberate the application. Do I have a motion?
Sure, move.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion, Pat, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed. All right, Dennis, would you like to deliberate on the application, your opinion?
Okay, this looks like a, um, pretty clear case of, um, reducing, reducing a set, side setback and reducing a coastal, um, resource. And I think it's a benefit to everybody.
I would be inclined to support it. I think that, uh, the applicant has done a pretty good job of, of balancing the various stakeholders. They've all involved in the property. I think like, you know, like the way the land is figuratively at the baseline, like kind of severely limits how the house could be designed and where the, the septic system could go. I definitely agree there. So I think you do have hardships, but even still, just the reduction in conformities, I think is to support the application.
No, uh, I don't know further comments. Everybody who's already said so. I can't add anything more, I think it's been well said.
There's Steve.
Here.
It's okay, I don't, I don't mind being a fly on the wall, but I, I kind of agree with everybody's comments. This one is, uh, yeah, I, leaning towards that, yeah, there, there are reduction in, you know, non-conformity, uh, comments and the made by everybody else, I agree with, and I would support this application.
And I have nothing to add, I would support it, I think it's been well stated here. Obviously with the reductions in the non-conformity, so I would support.
And we need a motion to close the deliberation. So moved.
Okay, second to close the deliberation portion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we need a, uh, motion to grant or deny or threat with conditions or deny the variances. So we have to state the reason for the right. So who wants to?
Take a shot at it. And make a motion, we approve the application twenty three twenty two for, um, replacement of the home at sixty nine Soundview Avenue, uh, where the variance requests for, uh, section two seventeen. Various requests is to allow section two seventeen to be, uh, for non-conformity of forty two feet to approach critical coastal resource for fifty four is required. And, um, this would be proved based on the fact that there is a reduction in side setback, elimination of a side setback. And a substantial reduction of the crystal, the critical coastal resource, a non-conformity from, um, thirty two feet to forty two feet. So, um, yeah. All, all construction must be in compliance of the plans submitted and upon acceptance of conditions approved for planning zone. Positionally, Lord fucker, I, I believe that the, uh, coastal site plan application. I can't hear you.
We're not at the coastal segment yet, so.
Okay, so I will stop it at that point.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'm all second.
Okay. All those in favor of, of the motion?
Aye.
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 Motion is passed and congratulations.
Okay, all the coastal applications.
I'm going to bring up the deep report.
Oh, sure, we can go, we can go through that and, uh, I'm gonna go over the plan. So, so the, uh, D E P letter response, which is advisory to you, came in today. Um, and I think in general has no negative comments associated with it. Um, it reviews the proposal and shows that it was thoroughly reviewed. And, uh, the conclusions, I think, are all positive and supportive of the, um, variance, um, feeling. So our protections and measures taken will, will protect the sound, you know, the limited coastal setback. So are there any questions or anything that we want to particularly go over on this? Um, I can pull up the plan and sort of go through the measures we're, we're proposing both during construction and after construction, um, to protect coastal resource.
Yeah, just run through real quickly.
Sure, yeah, the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, I just think we ought to, at least have it.
Absolutely.
Present it.
I, sure. I'm, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, the, the letter from the D E P, I, I can't reiterate. I haven't gotten as clean a response from them on, uh, on any coastal site. So I, I don't know what's happening, it's, uh, we must have done a very nice job with it, I guess. Um, so the existing seawall that is across here is, is a pretty hard barrier associated with, um, any type of infiltration that comes through. There's an existing sandy area that's in this area that's not natural, it was put in as a beach area. We're planning to actually, um, put topsoil on that and vegetate that. So that will allow for some, when it's done, some additional filtration and protection and a little bit more root structure to protect against erosion in that area. Um, the other, um, big change that's happening on this side is, um, is we're proposing to collect all the roof water as well as, um, the drainage on this half of the property into a subsurface drainage system that will be collected and, um, not surface flowed, which is the condition now, all the roof water and drainage off the driveway basically just surface flows, um, into this area. Um, during construction, he, um, he calls out, uh, self fencing along this property line, which will be maintained, um, during construction, as expected, as is, as is, uh, traditional. And then if we are, are already have it, um, discussed that we're gonna, um, take out an existing septic that is the, the fifties, I believe, and put in a new high tech, uh, conforming, um, septic system on the high side of the property, which really is not threatened in any way by scour or potential storm damage. So it is, um, I think in a much better place. And by putting it right ten feet off the property line, we have as much time to allow the natural systems to work before it comes to the sound. So in all ways, I think we've done a good job to sort of position things and prioritize them to protect the sound. Um, I think, you know, he's got the calculations for the drainage, um, the septic system design. We have a letter from Trent, uh, approving the, uh, four bedroom septic design. So I think, um, that sort of checks the boxes associated with coastal site plan review unless there's particular questions as to how we're.
Okay.
You have any questions?
I got some questions.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Looks good.
It's a good presentation. I think the only business that's left is, uh, we have to.
To approve this.
We have to approve this, this one?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the coastal? Yeah. It's right there.
Yeah. Um, I, I move that the, for the application twenty three twenty two, it's sixty nine Soundview, that the coastal site plan application is consistent with the goals and policies of coastal management and should be approved.
I'm all second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, congratulations. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Now, the only other business is to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Uh, yes.
Uh, so I wasn't present, so I'm gonna turn myself.
Okay.
John, you were here, right?
Yeah.
Steve, you were here, yeah.
Yes.
Want to make a motion to approve the minutes? Sure. To approve the answer of the last meeting? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it.
Let it be written, let it be done.
Motion to adjourn?
I move.
I'll, I'll second.
Oh, yeah, we have to adjourn.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's what in the rain and.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.